No, they would just are looking it over right now.
Um, I think everything's pretty straightforward. The only thing that's a little hard to look at is the personnel. Since we were budgeted for us paying people and now we're going to the city, it's split in two different -- you just kind of have to look at the totals to look at the percentage of the budget because that makes the most sense. It's to look at the totals. And we're at just under 30% and we should be at 33% as a target for that. Everything else I think is pretty straightforward. If I have any questions, I'll just call back.
Cheryl, am I reading this correctly? We receive 23% of our income?
Mm-hmm. 23% of what was budgeted, yes. A part of the income budgeted was going to reserves and we have not done that yet. I'm not up on when the next hot tax comes in and we may end up having to at least go for a long note. I'm not sure.
Any other questions about the financials or anybody need more time to look it over? Okay. We'll move on to board committee roundtable. I want to welcome our newest board member, Ms. Wanda Muton from Nacogdoches. Do you want to say a few words, sir?
Hello. Nice to see you. You all have a lot of familiar faces here and some that I don't know, but I look forward to meeting you.
Thank you. We are certainly honored to have you on our board and we look forward to working with There weren't -- nobody responded to be put on the agenda, so there's no more board We will go on to discussion items and presentations. I jumped the gun. First one already. With the second one, we have some very special guests in our audience. Brian Sullivan and Robin Klinker from the Texas Hotel and Lodging Association. They were doing a tour of East Texas and Brian and I had worked together during my time in Conroe and quickly became fast friends over our love of Nacogdoches and Stephen Up-Boston and other things as well. But he was gracious enough to reach out to see if there was anything that we needed while they were in the area and his visit, their visit just happened to coincide with our meeting. So we're going to give Brian some time just to speak about some issues of the industry and feel free to ask him questions that you have. And I will turn the floor over to you, Mr. Sullivan.
Wherever you feel most comfortable. We're filming, so if you want to... Do you want to go to the end?
Come back behind John and I.
All right. How about I pull this chair up so it's not awkward and standing over. And then they're all my friends, so I don't feel right doing it. I see so many familiar faces. In fact, some faces that may not remember mine, Dr. Muton, I'm a graduate of your college when you were teaching there at SOFA, as is my younger brother and Clayton Sullivan. And of course Clayton interned at the Chamber under Kelly as well. So a lot of love in the room. A lot of love in the room for me. It's nice to be here with everyone. I've been to a couple of your board meetings before, so I have met a number of the board members. But as Sherry said, in our working relationship over the past couple and a half years, I guess, when she came to Nacogdoches, when she got hired on here, I was just hurrah, hurrah. I'm a big Sherry Morgan fan and you all made a very excellent pick. I also want to thank and give a shout out to John McLaren, the board chair, who's always been so gracious to work with and helping to advance legislation even that was passed on behalf of the Fredonia Hotel Project. We very much work closely with John and his organization at the Fredonia. So with all that being said, as Sherry alluded to, my name is Brian Sullivan. I'm one of our three attorneys at the Texas Hotel and Lodging Association. My colleague, Robin Klinker.
Hi, Ken.
She is the head of our membership and marketing department at THLA, as we call it. For those of you who are not aware of kind of who we are and what we do, why I'm here to maybe help guide you on some of these issues, we are the statewide lodging association that represents the industry all across Texas and we have been doing this for 115 years. So the legislature and cities around the state tend to, dare I say, respect our voice whenever we want to talk about issues of hotel occupancy tax, how those funds can be utilized, some of the more recent issues that are developing now with short-term rental activity and being a new player in the lodging sector, the ins and outs of the laws around short-term rentals, tax collection, what qualifies as short-term rental, these types of issues. And then, of course, we also deal with rendering legal advice day to day to properties around the state. And we have now, I believe, in the next month or so, we will have surpassed 4,000 hotel members in the state of Texas. So a couple of things, I want to just kind of make a really brief overview of hotel occupancy tax use and then I want to get in and talk a little bit about short-term rentals. But let me just encourage you that if there are issues pertinent to Nacogdoches which I am unaware or things that you do want to ask about or bring up in this meeting, please, we can take it any direction you would like. So hotel occupancy taxes, a number of you are probably familiar with the two-step process that we use every time we look at how can we spend these funds. That two-step process, of course, requires that first, the expenditure has to have a direct impact on bringing folks from outside of Nacogdoches to the city. And then also that has to have a direct impact on increasing lodging activity in the area. All right? So whether that be bed and breakfast properties or, you know, the largest hotel in town or any of the above, as long as the funds are being utilized to have that kind of direct impact on tourism and overnight stays, then you're kind of on the right course, right? You're already on the right foot to looking at how these funds can be used. The exact letter of the law, for those of you who might be interested or if you look it up later, the exact letter of the law here says that every expenditure must directly enhance and promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry. You also probably have heard of some of the colloquial terms that we use in the business, one of which is helping to put heads in beds. And the term heads in beds comes from that legal standard found in the tax code dealing with that direct impact. Now, once you get past that initial analysis, you look at the different categories that you can use hotel occupancy tax funds to fund different expenditures, right? Whether that's for your visitor's center, like right here in this building, or whether it's for registration of conference attendees at maybe at the conference space across the street, or advertising and promotion, which is definitely the bread and butter of what we use hotel tax funds for in Texas. Of course, Sherry is intimately familiar with this process because advertising and promotion is actually the only category of all nine different categories we have in state law that the state legislature says you have to spend a minimum amount of money. And here in Nacogdoches, that would be one-seventh of all of your revenues must go toward advertising and promotion. The reason the state has that built into the law, the reason they require us to do that, is because they have seen, the state has seen, very much a huge amount of success whenever they leverage state hotel tax dollars by advertising and promoting Texas as a destination to audiences all over the world, not even just the United States. Governor Abbott has been quoted as talking about how for every dollar the state of Texas leverages in its marketing efforts, the state sees $7 come back to Texas by way of tourism spending, right? The way it makes sense to me and how I kind of try to explain it is that you're probably not going to encounter someone who visits Nacogdoches, who checks into any sort of lodging establishment, walks into their room, sits down in their chair, folds their arms and waits until it's checkout time, right? They're eating in your restaurants, they're shopping in your shops, perhaps drinking in your establishments. All the associated tax revenues from that activity, that's what we talk about. We talk about tourism spending. And so I feel like, you know, Robin and I work in a pretty friendly industry and that we get to be the rising tide that lifts all boats, right? Guests are coming in to stay at hotels and bed and breakfasts and lodging properties with really having a beneficial impact on the entire economy. So that's the kind of impact that advertising and promotion is really aimed to have. Tell your story, your brand, attract folks to your area and you will see that rising tide. That's the philosophy. All right? Now, the fourth category of eligible spending is for promotion of the arts. And this can be many different forms of art, including theater production, live music. Of course, I know here in Nacogdoches and having interned at the Chamber, I know about the Blueberry Festival and a lot of the other events that are put on here in the city, many of which could be eligible for using hotel tax funds to help produce those events. There's also a category for historical restoration and preservation activities. And here in Nacogdoches, I can't tell you how many times it is where I'm traveling across the state, I mean, all corners of Texas. And I use Nacogdoches, Texas, as an example when I talk about historical restoration and preservation, right? Who else has already celebrated their tricentennial? You know, I mean, you guys are with me on this. I mean, this is, this is a huge thing for Nacogdoches. It's a big story to tell and it's part of our brand. So historical restoration and preservation, whether it's your facilities that may be in need of repair, or whether it's historical programming that you put on to sort of showcase to visitors what makes Nacogdoches historic, these are potential expenses that could be eligible for funding with hotel tax money. We also have a couple of different categories related to sporting events and sporting facilities. I'm not going to really get into the nuances of those this morning. There's a bit more, a few intricacies to those, but certainly I'm happy to talk with you offline, answer questions regarding those at a later time because I don't want to kind of bombard your meeting here. There's also two other categories for tourism-related signage. And that's really your directional wayfinding signs that can be paid for with hotel tax money. Those signs that direct your visitors, they direct your tourists to the sites and attractions of Nacogdoches. And the final category is for transportation systems for tourists. There is actually an opportunity to utilize your local hotel tax money to help pay for transporting tourists from your area properties, from your hotels, to different events, to the festivals or to these types of things. And again, we can kind of get into the nitty-gritty on those at your wishes, but that's a general overview. That's a general overview of how we can use these funds. Now, some of you may be wondering, well, Brian, we understand, we understand there's a two-step process. You know, we know what we think of generally whenever we think of a hotel and what that looks like. But what about all these vacation rooms? What about these short terminals? Or how are they treated under the law? Must they remit hotel occupancy tax? Here is the really simple and direct truth, I guess you could say, behind the law on who qualifies as a hotel just for purposes of taxation. All right? So just for purposes of taxation, a short-term rental property that is renting a room or a whole house or what have you for compensation to against, they qualify as a hotel for taxation purposes. There is actually, the legislature added a provision into the law a couple of years ago. They made it abundantly clear and actually defined the term "short-term rental." And so in that definition, it expressly says essentially, a short-term rental for purposes of taxation is a hotel. All right? Now, enforcement efforts, trying to figure out sometimes who all is listed on Airbnb or HomeAway or some of these services, and that can be a challenge, right? We at THLA help communities who are interested to kind of further those efforts. We help them with everything from letters, notice letters sent to properties you think may be engaging in that activity, to even all the way up to a city ordinance. We work with cities who have passed their own ordinances that require registration of these properties to have certain basic information on file at the city as an operating business, like any other operating business may have on file with the municipality. So, you know, we anticipate that the legislature may continue to be interested in looking at short-term rentals during the next legislative session, which begins in January of next year, to potentially lay some groundwork or ground rules, we might say, that would apply statewide. There would be sort of a basic set of rules to apply all across Texas because the current state of affairs is that every city can make its own rules, can levy its own rules around that activity and what kind of registration requirements there might be, kind of insurance requirements there might be, whether or not you can inspect these properties on a regular basis, different types of things like that.
Curious, do you have any members who are short-term?
Yes. Yes, we do. Yeah, we represent all properties in Texas, whether that's the smallest mom-and-pop bed and breakfast or short-term rental or a large thousand-room convention center hotel. The way we view short-term rental is just FYI, is simply another competitor in the marketplace for our industry. And that was the story that we were telling at the legislature when they were looking at this issue, is that we welcome that type of activity into the market. We just want to make sure that similar rules are going to apply to similar-sized operations. So if we have requirements that are imposed upon, say, bed and breakfast or small hotels, then similar rules should apply as well in the short-term rental context. Yes?
I'm not, until I got on the CDB board, I wasn't very familiar with hotel occupancy tax. But I, over the course of my life, have become familiar with all sorts of taxes. And, you know, my, you know, I mean, my experience is, is that if you're not paying a tax that you're subject to, then you can be fined, penalized, et cetera, going, you know, going retroactively. You know, I went collecting sales tax for the last two years of my business. They'd want it at some point. So if, I'm assuming that Airbnb and VRBO, because they're, you know, national, international type situations, aren't collecting the taxes at the point of sale, so wouldn't that, unless these people who are, who have a property on Airbnb or VRBO, unless they're voluntarily cutting a check to the state every, you know, quarter or year, aren't all of them technically in violation and aren't all of them subject to backup collection?
So the answer is yes and no. And let me explain. Right? Typical lawyer keeping himself in business here, right? No, in all actuality, I say yes and no because Airbnb, the company, Airbnb, has actually executed an agreement with the state comptroller's office. So Airbnb listed properties in Texas. The company of Airbnb actually collects and remits the state hotel occupancy tax for those properties, right? For their hosts, for their customers. When it comes to the local tax collection, they do not have that kind of agreement in place, right? So it's still on the burdeners, the onus of the property owner who's renting out their property, to remit that taxation, those tax dollars, to the local governments. Now, when it comes to education, right? How do some folks even know what tax they may owe? Well, the different companies, Airbnb, HomeAway and others, they are doing, they're making a good faith effort to provide that notice and the terms and conditions of becoming one of their customers, right? So they're giving you notice upfront before you ever get listed on those platforms of what your obligations may be. Now, keep in mind, we have over 1,000 cities in Texas, right? We've got 254 counties and they have variable tax rates. So it would have been much more difficult perhaps for one company such as Airbnb to kind of make sure that every customer is in compliance, put on local rules and regulations. But going back to your point about sort of back taxes, that gets into the area of what we call prosecutorial discretion, right? So the city, it would be within the city's discretion of how it wants to approach that issue, whether it wants to look at what is legally possible and trying to go back to collect taxes that may have been owed even several years in the past, or whether the goal is simply compliance. And let's just sort of move forward, let's get, let's understand what the rules are, let's give everyone notice and let's kind of start from there and not so much worry about trying to fought it back and all the resources and time that needs associated with that.
Well, not to dominate it with your presentation with this question, but, and I thought, I guess erroneously, that, that all of the hot tax went to the state and then they sent us our portion. But in actuality, when John, well, a hotel property in Nacogdoches was paying its hotel occupancy tax, it pays the state in one check and then it pays its bill to the municipality in a different check.
Yes.
And to a different address somewhere here locally. Is there any way that, say, if we were going to pursue this in the future, that we could get triggered when the state collects hotel occupancy tax so that we would know who's paying that tax here locally, rather than trying to track down all of the renters and be like, did you rent out last weekend? Did you rent there? You're renting out next weekend? And try to get on a, you know, some sort of schedule and agreement with them? Could we just get the information from the state that says Phil Jones paid hot tax on this weekend, this weekend and this weekend?
Yes.
And so he might owe you hot tax as well?
So that's publicly available information, right? Because they're state tax dollars and you can research them. The other thing is that most cities sort of synchronize their payment schedule with that of the state. So, and by the way, even if a property doesn't have any taxable sales, say they do zero sales within a given quarter, it would, you know, just to say on, on schedule and on track, just saying, stay consistent.
And it's on the state level?
On either level.
Either level, yeah. But we merely just have to formalize it as, in our city government, through our city government.
Right, be a city enforcement issue.
Okay.
And we're happy to work with you all on that. You know, I know that at this point now, THLA, you know, keep in mind, we have three attorneys full-time. Taxation, hotel tax, kind of our bread and butter, one of the things we do. And we've been around for about 60 years before these provisions in the tax code ever existed, right? So we helped draft most of these provisions quite literally ourselves. We are considered the expert witnesses at the legislature and we've partnered with over 115 communities now where we have all the properties within a community and membership with THLA. And in exchange, we're able to give all of our legal services to the city, right? To all of the properties when they call us about employment law issues they're having or personal injury or, you know, ADA concerns, whatever it might be. We're sort of that one-stop shop and, you know, currently, we don't have that type of group partnership here in Nacogdoches. It's something we very much want to have in the future. And in communication with Sherry about what that could look like moving forward, but just know, you know, here at the board level, that THLA wants to be your partner and we're here to provide all those services, whether it's the short-term rental or the taxation or the services that, quite frankly, for many hotels would be cost prohibitive if they had to go out and hire an outside worker, just to even examine an issue. Our membership fees have not been raised in 20 years. We take a lot of pride in keeping it very consistent and predictable for communities. And by the way, those membership dues can be paid for from hotel occupancy tax dollars. The reason being is that you can utilize category number three for advertising and promotion efforts because once properties are a member of THLA, they are advertised on all of the state's major tourism websites. Texaslodging.com, Travel Tax, Tour Texas. These are websites that see 6 million-plus unique visitors searching for lodging every year. And so you can't even get on those websites unless you're a member of THLA. See, we quite literally put you on that map of 6 million-plus. We give you all the legal services and the legislative support that we offered, you know, as we did a couple of years ago with the Fredonia Project. And that's not, I scored my short spiel. Robin is our director of those at first, and so she would be sort of spearheading that here at the CDB level with you all. But I wanted to make mention of that because, just so you can know, that's what we hope to do with you all moving forward.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Not quite related to that. We are starting to do more events. Wine Swirl is a good example where, I mean, wine whiskey brew. We've done several events like that where we charge the participants money, so it's coming into us, and then we buy t-shirts, we get buses to go from the hotels back and forth. We do promotion, a lot of promotion, Facebook and printed materials and things like that. Is the money coming in unrestricted and the money going out be restricted funds?
So here's the way I want to answer your question. If you are charging a person, some admission fee or event fee or whatever you want to call it, those are not hotel tax dollars.
Right.
Because hotel tax dollars are only those dollars that are produced from a room night.
So I can call that unrestricted funds, correct?
Correct.
But the events that we're doing, if we were not charging, we could be using restricted hotel tax funds for, correct?
Well, it just depends on the expense.
Want to wash, you want to wash restricted funds in turn or make that restricted?
Exactly. I'm just asking, is that legal?
Let me, let me give you an example. This is sort of a common example that we hear about, particularly toward the end of the calendar years or even midway through the year. Sometimes folks will call and ask, they'll say, Brian, we've got the most magnificent, amazing, incredible, wonderful, best in the land, right? I'll leave a Christmas parade you've ever seen in your life. Can we use our hotel occupancy tax dollars to pay for our Christmas lights? Now, I love Christmas, right? The good in my heart was to say yes 100 times over, but legally the answer is no. However, if this is particularly a Christmas event, this is the biggest of the, you know, the cities of the year and you're drawing in folks from out of town and people are staying overnight for it, well, there may be an opportunity to cover your advertising costs, your promotion and marketing costs associated with getting the word out, right? Letting people know this is when it is, where it is, what's going to happen. There may be costs associated with a live band or some sort of arts production that could fall under category number four for promotion of the arts. There may be historical programming piece to this. There may be, so there's several different opportunities perhaps, but that's an example of a hard expense and the lights themselves that would not be eligible, but there may be some other event costs that are.
Well, and promotion is the primary thing we're spending the money on.
Right.
So promotion still falls in the category advertising and promotion.
Yes.
Flyers, yes, t-shirts, no.
T-shirts, no. Well, the t-shirts come out of their face, but as, as everything comes out. But the flyers and the bus and all of that could be, the transportation would follow, that would fall under your category.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Yes.
In regards to the short-term, is it better short-term stays? If we know them, should we, like, kind of ingratiate them right now in the conversation regardless of this tax situation?
Well, I don't want to necessarily tell you what to do because, again, it's sort of a city decision and I'm not a... of a city decision and I'm not a, I'm not a city official, but what I will tell you is that what we've seen be successful is encouraging compliance, right? Because we know that these stays are subject to paying or to remitting hotel occupancy tax. And it would seem to us that maybe the best way to move forward is education. Right? I, I think that there are a lot of these operators that may not understand or really know that their rental activity is subject to hotel tax because, I think, well, I don't own a hotel, right? But again, under state law, just for taxation purposes, they are operating a hotel. Yes?
Are we collecting any of those kind of taxes now from these Airbnb people?
We get our stuff in the city. I, I don't think so, but I don't know that.
No, they're not contributing currently and that's a decision that goes beyond, above and this board, really. I mean, we could, could enter a request to have that visited, but that's a municipal decision, correct, Mr. Jeffersons?
Right.
And if, and if the, if, if the city wanted to get involved in that after, you know, discussion of comparative merits, it would be just as simple as, you know, perhaps working with someone like you or perhaps, but, but to your, what you're asking, could it, would it be as simple as just finding out who paid those taxes to the state and saying, oh, well, I know Bill, I'm going to call him and, you know, start calling these people and telling them they need to come to an informational thing? And, you know, I mean, does it work somewhat, somewhat like that?
That would be one avenue you could take. You know, again, like I say, we work with communities on this day in and day out. And so I would think, at least I would hope that we could be very helpful in that process. Certainly on the education side, but also on the documentation side. You know, this is our, we represent the industry, the whole sector. So we have templates, we have, you know, different documents that we can help you all tailor if need be to kind of move it along a much faster.
Could I ask Jim a question? Jim, does, does, should he have any appetite at all at trying to track down some of these dollars from B and Bs and things like that?
I think so. Like, you have one question that I would ask, so let's know what we're squabbling over. If it's not a significant amount of money, then it's not a priority, even though every little bit helps. Your previous interim executive director with some misplaced exuberance made some phone calls demanding that the tax be paid and really kind of stirred the pot. And so we were going to look at, we stepped away because of that. Sherri and I have not had an occasion to talk about it and so we'll visit about it. And we're with Brian and we will give you some part of numbers. And there may be an Airbnb or two who is actually paying the tax because they picked up the phone, they called me, I had a relationship with them. And their last question was, is anybody else paying it? And I said, no. Well, are they supposed to pay it? Yes. Well, I'll go ahead and pay it, but I haven't verified whether they have or have not. But what they're paying, that one Airbnb is going to be, you know, just a few dollars per quarter. It's not a significant amount of money.
I would assume you could get some kind of feel for a amount of money that maybe is not being collected by looking at the state hotel tax. Is that, is that correct? You can get some kind of feel for it too.
So is it we're isolating Airbnb activity just in our city?
Well, if you did a search just on the website for Nacogdoches, Texas, you would probably see all the properties that are being listed in Nacogdoches, Texas. The issue is that you're not going to get addresses.
Right.
And so that's, I'm sorry?
But you can't get a hold of them because I've tried in just trying to assist getting people placed at downtown, so beyond Fredonia. There is a willingness, there's a willingness.
They're in the city limits too.
Oh, yeah, these are.
Downtown is city limits, they're in the county.
Or open door.
And they are open to discussion. And they are filled quite often because that's where a lot of our people.
One of the points I just want to make in, in sort of summarizing this issue is that you have to remember, these tax dollars that are owed are not owed necessarily, I think the way I would phrase it is that they're not owed necessarily by the owner because the first responsibility is upon the guest, right? The owner is simply the conduit, they're really sort of the channel through which the guest remits their taxes to the government. And so I just kind of encourage you to keep that in mind because it's not a tax on the owner, it's a tax on the guest.
So is usually that charge passed through fees?
Yes.
But it's different than sales tax, which is also a tax on the purchaser, not the seller. But the seller's responsible for the sales tax. But in the case of hotel occupancy tax, the seller is not responsible. The owner is primarily responsible?
Well, the owner, right. So the owner is responsible to remit the tax. I think that's the key word is remit.
Okay.
But the tax is upon the guest.
Yeah. And that's where, like, where I've come in mainly just from availability. So I'm looking at for guests and they're, they, like Airbnb, I'm sorry, a B and B, they want people in their places.
Yeah.
So I think there's a willingness on their part, it's just they need the education.
It's just a add-on.
There's none, there's none of them, you know, not interested in finding out how they could be more of a benefit to the CDB and the community.
I think it's certainly a discussion to be had and a topic to be considered, but we should never lose sight that we never want to do anything to detract from the brand of Nacogdoches. And the end user doesn't know if the property they're staying at is contributing hotel occupancy tax or not. And so we want to always ensure that they've got, they have the best experience that they can while, during their stay in Nacogdoches, whether that's in an Airbnb or, you know, a Bed and Breakfast or one of our, our hotels. So we really have to, from our, from our place, manage those relationships with those owners and certainly our relationship with the city. And if it is something that the city chooses to move forward with, that we do so in a very prescribed method so that we don't encounter the problem that we had before where feathers were ruffled and, you know, those relationships were jeopardized unintentionally. But, you know, we, we have to make sure that we get everybody on board. And as Joanna alluded, I don't, I don't think that anybody is not contributing out of spite or any malice. I think it, it is an education thing. You know, I just think we need to really look at our relationships with the city, with all lodging owners, and again, just move forward, forward very carefully, but something that we should do.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree with Jim that, you know, if we're talking about $350, how much, how much of our resources do we really want to spend collecting it?
Right.
But it's certainly worth, you know, y'all talking about finding out.
Well, over time, it does add up.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And it explains to the local market that this is part of the process.
And it doesn't seem fair to charge two or three who are willing to do it and know that they're supposed to be doing it and the rest of that scrutiny or competition thing, that doesn't seem fair.
I believe in compliance and paying your taxes.
Well, these places, some of them are, they're stunning, they're beautiful. And so they're not, you know, some of them are over 100 bucks, so, and they're always booked.
Let me, let me provide, and then I'll get out of your way, let me provide sort of the icing on the cake here. Because keep in mind, sort of another thing you can communicate to these operators in the same breath even perhaps, is that, yes, here's the lay of the land, here's what's legally, you know, required, but at the same time, we're going to partner with THLA and we're going to list your property on all these websites, right?
Yes.
So.
That's what they're interested in.
I see a real opportunity for a win-win. You know, we are, of course, a nonprofit organization, we're a member-driven organization, that's how we exist, that's how our revenues come in, our member dues. But I think that might be some good news to deliver when you're also kind of providing that education piece.
Where you get some of your money.
Absolutely.
Oh, and they want that.
Yeah.
To know how they can, you know, benefit.
I can imagine that.
Well, and as we move into building our next fiscal budget, that is something that I very much am interested in trying to see if we can find the funds for is from the CDB providing membership for all of our, our properties as a service that we do, that we provide for them because of the benefits. Travel and tourism is very dynamic and it is always changing and their staff literally has their thumb on the pulse of the industry. And so I think it's a good utilization of resources and a good expenditure of money because of the return of you get, of what you get for that, for that membership. But hopefully we'll be able to find the money in the budget to provide that because I think it's, you know, a good faith effort in our partnership with our properties as well, with those managers and showing respect out of the hard job that they have just on a day-to-day basis and doing what they do.
Theoretically, it can pay for itself, which is well, you know, in theory.
Well, Brian, thank you so much.
Of course.
And Robin, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. It's, it's great to be here now and I just love coming here.
Can I say?
I, I will, I will, many, many times, many, many times. And.
You have a purple tie when you get here.
I sure do. I sure do, I bust it out. Yeah. Yeah, I actually still have, there's another one I still have from my student government day. I had one purple tie when I was a senior and I was leading the student government at SFA and, boy, I wore that thing out. Thank you so much for having us.
All right. Moving into the reports, the executive directors, that's me. I passed out to you all, we just got yesterday the January report for Smith Travel. Our January numbers were good. I did my best to sort of piecemeal it together so it wasn't T90 and it was in color this time, so. I heard you. And so as you, and I also cut out, I just limited it, the, the stats just to our fiscal year. So you can see year-to-date, our percent change was 11.3% for January in our occupancy. There's a negative in that average daily rate fee and the revenue, average daily rate is that ADR and then that RevPAR is revenue per available room. And that was at 8.1.
Also, interesting point out, the, for the running 12, it's also 8.1. And just to remind everyone again, the, the Fredonia and it's, what it generates is not part of this report. So that, that's, that would actually make this number go up.
We haven't taken a hit, and we haven't taken a hit in revenue, it doesn't look like.
ADR is down, but that's, we're, I think, hopefully that will change soon. But it's, 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 it's good to see that, that activity and, and the activity around town that I see some of the feeder kind of businesses that, that prelude oil and gas as well that are around, around town, that increase activity with landmen, with forestry services who clear power lines and clear, clear decks for, for rigs and such. So that's encouraging to see. They usually come in before the other activities. So I think that's a good sign all the way around.
So really optimistic numbers. That's good to hear. We have been, I have been looking into the budget and trying to find ways to cut corners where we can. It's a little difficult not having been a part of the budget-making process and not knowing where the cushion was, was laid and sort of the thinking behind it. We had a few occurrence, well, one specific occurrence that I thought we'd be able to save money, but on a, we've got a Pitney Bowes mail system that you add postage money onto via a credit card. That cost us $127 a month to lease just the equipment, that's not including the postage. Unfortunately, we would, in 2015, the interim director signed a 48-month lease on that that we could buy our way out of, but it's, it's more than just sucking it up and paying it out for the next year. So we will, you know, little things like that. But I am trying and then there's been some hits on our, on our budget that were unanticipated and just we couldn't prepare for. We, our phone system did go down completely and John was able to step in and help refer us to a local service, Elliot Electric, got us back on board with a system similar to what the Fredonia is doing. And that was something that unfortunately, time was at the essence, so we weren't able to bring that in front of you as a board, but did pull in our chairman, board chair to assist with that and we have to have the phone. So we'll, we'll be able to find that cost and we did price it out and compare, we tried to shop it around as best as we could. And I think we're on the right track. There'll be some benefits from that as well, be able to get a stronger inter, in conjunction with that because it is a voice-over IP system. So, do y'all have any questions or? Okay. And then unfortunately, they, some other issues have come up, but the numbers that we would need to discuss, it didn't come in until after the agenda was set, so we can't really take action on it, but stay tuned for next month's meeting because we'll, we'll, we'll have some financial fun next month. But there's just, just growing problems, they're good problems to have and one of them is looking at updating our fire system and making sure that that's monitored. And so that's always important that we keep our building and our visitors and our staff safe. And then the other involves our website, simple view and some, some training matters. But other than that, things are going well. And I will turn it over to the rest of the staff to give their reports unless there's other questions about.
Just a quick one, sorry if I missed it in a previous meeting, but was our insurance ever reached a purchase? Okay, we got that, just want to make sure.
And Mr. Jefferson, I did visit, at our last meeting, we talked about onboarding, that onboarding process with new committee members in that timeframe. And he and I did correspond by email over what that would look like. It would involve a change in our bylaws if we choose to move forward. And I'm going to put that off until next meeting as well because there, there's going to be a lot of discussion about that and I knew that we were going to have this presentation today. So our next meeting will, there'll be some, be a little heavier in the discussion and decision-making arena. Stephanie?
I included all of my updates from the last month in the marketing report that you all received in the email. So if you have any questions about that, that's where the bulk of my updates lie. And I just have three very short updates that weren't included that have happened since then. Mike and I have been working hard to create some additional new merchandise that will be sold upstairs. I know that was included in our 2018 marketing plan. So we're trying to update, come up with some new things that visitors really want to purchase. So we are currently updating all of our, oh my goodness, all of our postcards. And so we've got, you know, you've seen our little rack up there, we've got 12. So we're coming up with 12 new designs and that's probably our number one most sought-after item people come in asking for. So we're just about to place an order for those because a lot of them are old and outdated. And we're also looking at coffee mugs. Mike and I have just been keeping our ears open and listening for what people ask for the most. And then, you know, just those typical tourism souvenirs, we're just trying to redo our stock of those. So that's one thing.
And are we raising the price of postcards?
We are, we're raising the price. We've been very, very low on those. We've been selling postcards two for a dollar, 50 cents a piece. We think we can really raise that because people won't mind spending a dollar or two on a postcard and so that, we're just looking for small ways that we can increase our revenue on that. I think we have a really good space upstairs where we can display a lot more items, so we're just trying to break that alive, you know? So if y'all have any ideas of items, you know, we're definitely looking at magnets, mugs, some people have asked for spoons, you know? So if there's anything that you feel that would really sell well, we're getting the quotes right now. quotes right now and we're getting the designs back in and we're narrowing down what we're going to purchase, so.
Magnets, for sure.
Yes, magnets are, I know my husband and I collect those.
That one, right, so.
Yeah. So, if y'all think of anything you'd have to have if you visited someplace, let us know. Secondly, I know one thing that Sherry has been working on is making sure that our roles are aligned properly as far as with our job descriptions. And so, previously with this position, you know, we get all these calls for Azalea season, which is fantastic. And previously, the marketing director kind of handled booking those day trips. It's one of those things that kind of fell into this position's responsibilities somewhere in the past, not really sure how. Now, Mike is going to take over handling those reservations because a lot of those day trips, we need a volunteer, as far as like a step-on guide for a bus tour. Mike works directly with our volunteers, so he has, it's just kind of right up his alley, he's really good at it. So, Mike is going to be taking care of working with our volunteers to make sure that all of our day trips are scheduled, so. And we have the Film Festival taking place this weekend, so we're really excited about that. One thing to the film, that the CDB is doing differently this year, is we're providing large gift baskets, kind of more of a high-dollar gift basket than we normally do, to the VIPs that are coming in. That will be our actors and actresses, John Snyder, Ruth Fuzzy. So, they will get a really nice gift basket from the CDB in their hotel room before they arrive. So, we're finishing that up this week and we definitely see those people as influencers, you know, those are people who can go to their social media accounts and say, "I had a great time at Nakadosh's, look what they gave me," you never know. So, we're taking care of that and we're happy to welcome them here this weekend, so. And that's all. Any questions for Stephanie?
Might want to put it on the note card in the gift baskets, hashtag or the.
Right, yes. We've got a little welcome note, you know, with our names on it, and so, we're excited.
Talk to that marketing, trying to raise a little money. Is there any thought in putting vending machines up there?
You know, we actually did think about getting a smaller one that we would control and not have to have it stocked, but have it, put it back in the kitchen area so it doesn't interfere with the aesthetic of the outside. But in it, it could have water, some sustainable snack item, and then even, you know, like a travel toiletry kit in case somebody forgot their toothbrush or toothpaste.
But that's back in the back, you, that's backed up.
It is. You know, it's, it's a give and take, I guess there could be some space carved out around our elevator area. But I think one of the good things about our servicing is that nobody just walks through the door without being greeted and told about the amenities that we have, we could certainly add that in. But it is something that we've talked about, we haven't really worked out the logistics of it, that's a good idea.
I know when I work up there, it's quite often they come and study, they've been cooperating here.
That's right.
Been working out.
I've heard the same. So, I think there's a, a demand for it and that would be a good revenue driver. And I've priced them, both the ones that are serviced, as well as the ones that, you know, you can just go to Sam's and buy the machine and you can keep it safe for yourself. And so, again, it's a matter of building that into the budget and those upfront costs, but that's again, something that would pay for itself over the long term.
You don't think our Easy Steps Away restaurants or snack shacks might rather have us pointing our visitors to them?
Well, and we do, but sometimes what I hear a lot just sitting at my desk, people come in, is, "Where can I just buy a bottle of water?"
And then, the question, okay, do you do?
Yeah. So, we're not looking to replace anything.
I think bottled water is great, and I love it when we have the groups come in and you actually have the little cooler stand where they can just grab one and go. But I don't know if I try to compete with snacks and.
Well, but I, but people coming in up there usually are not going to say, "Well, I'm going to go over to Dolly's Diet, they'll give me a cold one."
No, but they could go over to Jerry's and get some ice cream to cup with it.
I can't correct it.
And a bag of peanuts or crackers.
I just think, well, I did it, but upstairs when they come in to me on Sunday afternoon.
And Jerry's open on Sunday afternoon, she pays a person, stay there. I'm just saying, I don't mind a bottle of water and, you know, if you have to have the cracker, but I'd just rather help out our.
No, it raises a.
Or over at the cafe, I don't know. But, anyway, just my thought.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, we're talking maybe like an 18-slot vending machine tops. So, I mean, there wouldn't be that many offerings, but, you know, if you're traveling with a, with a child and they're having a meltdown and they just need a Goldfish cracker, then, you know.
It seems worth the money, that.
You got the bank, you're not going to go like that. You're going to, whatever, it seems worth.
Yeah, we're exploring all avenues.
Law machines.
I've contemplated capitalizing on Stephanie's current state and having her sell pencils out on the.
I approve of that.
The time of the clock is ticking.
I started saying.
All right, Ms. Joanna.
All right, first of all, I just want to get a couple of dates out there because you're all invited. March 19th, which is a Monday, at about 4:30, we're going to be at Macklemore's, kind of a meet and greet, Sherry with our B&amp;B and other partners, you know, kind of, kind of expand that to whom we want in the moment, but that is on the books if you'd like to come. So, March 19th, 4:30, Macklemore's. And then, the following day, we're going to have several meeting planners come in for our familiarization tour. So, I have on the itinerary several different opportunities for you guys to come and be a part of that. I'll send that to you, that's going to be March 20th through 21st. There's lunch, there's breakfast, and there's dinner, that there'll be opportunity for you to join us. And then, just FYI, next week, I leave on Tuesday to go to a remaining week sales symposium in Austin to wheel and deal and I've been selected as a captain of a team.
They know what they're doing.
I am. That was kind of cool.
Right back to my point.
So, this report that you have in front of you, which is the event impact summary, if you can very quickly go to the last page, the definite bookings, the name and the event are all correct. So, these are guys that have either signed a contract or contracts in hand, these are on the books. The economic impact value is what we are reworking, if you flip back to the front, with this event impact summary. It's, it's a calculator outside of the simple view format, all right? So, what this is, is I have a person now on the other end of the phone that can actually help with the numbers that I'm inputting. And it's not as simple as I had thought, you know, hey, we got a block of 50, I expect 100 people. That isn't the way that the information is necessarily supposed to be inputted. So, I want you guys to take this. This JC's Conference is something that actually happened this last weekend, Fredonia. This is as close to being right as it can be. I do want you to look at it because I, too, am getting the questions answered to why this number is this way. But more importantly, I am going to have you compare the back sheet, the definite bookings, to the new economic indicators, once I am able to have the time to do that. So, it takes a minute to go back in. I wanted to try to get it as quickly as I could with the 2018 bookings. And so, what'll happen moving forward is on this definite bookings, you will have the correct potential economic impacts. Because it's not until they come, and I have the actual pickup, that will give you the appropriate impact it had on our city. Does that make sense? So, you'll get the laundry list in the back, and then you'll get the per case on the front. And then, when you get this new revised one, as I said, please call, ask me any questions that you might have, because that's only going to help and strengthen our calls moving forward. Currently, we have categories that are meetings, trade shows, and associations, and then sports. However, if we have a Blueberry event, or if we have a Vintage Market Day event, or a rodeo event, it's not currently in our system. So, we have to, we're budgeted to get those available to us, and that'll be the next step, and that'll happen sooner than later.
Thank you, Joanna. Any questions for Joanna? Yeah, we're really excited about this new calculator. The numbers all come out the same, but the process of getting there, it's just a nicer trip. It's a, it's a far more user-friendly approach to getting to those, and the reporting is more visual, and so it visually gives you that, the impact at a glance. Mike's report, in January, we had 682 walk-in visitors and we hosted board meetings for the Nakadosh's County Historical Foundation, Nakadosh's Historic Inc., and the Nakadosh's Film Festival, and served as packet pickup location and registration for the public queue. So, we're really trying to focus more on our servicing for groups that come through and sort of supplementing, especially for those groups that have chosen to stay at the Fredonia. The Fredonia's got a great staff, but where we can fill in on those services and in our partnership with them, we're looking at doing that for them, but for all groups that come through. But we do provide make tax, we can serve as a check-in, registration pickup, and sometimes that's logistically a big consideration for some of these small, meaningful groups that are coming through town, being hosted here, so we're happy to do that. Next meeting, 8:30 a.m. on Wednesday, March the 21st, same bedtime schedule. If there are no further questions, I'll accept a motion to adjourn at 9:35.
So, we.
Second.
Second.
Damon, all of you, I suppose the same, thank you so much. Have a dry.